You are watching Access to Port County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's the October 2nd, 2023 meeting of the Port County Council Budget Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access to Port County dot org.
Good evening all, we're continuing on budget discussions. It is currently 5:32, I believe. Yep. Gentlemen, we do have an agenda, well, kind of a list of things that we need to tackle, but I went through this report the other day, yesterday with Adam, and we were trying to make sure that the salary changes were there. We've got another set of reports here, which I have not had a time, opportunity to look at and match up to what we already had. I'm just going to make sure that this, everybody knows that this is a continuation of our budget hearings that originally started in July. I have the following changes in building maintenance for the 100 accounts to match up what should be in the, that was in the ordinance. 10111, the very first one, 67,000, the extra 10,000 is on the FMEC. It's not part of his base salary and therefore it needs to go to the base salary. In account 10130, the extra part-time, that goes down to 90,000. In 10151, we were given the numbers the last time, 150158. And maintenance, 10152, maintenance. We were also given a number of 365564, which is last year's numbers without the added new people. There was a correction of a flipping of the 10230 and the 10231 from the original numbers that we received. The Assistant Building Maintenance Supervisor is 63029 and the HVAC Technician is 64985. Somehow, there is a classification of that person as a pole. We'll have to look into that as another time, at another time. Those are my only changes to that 100 account. We'll do all the 100.
Mr. President, I apologize. So the, the one going to pole, that was the HVAC?
HVAC, yeah.
Did somebody request that?
I don't know why he's listed as a pole.
Okay.
That's what, you know, when we, when we saw it on our salary ordinance, he's listed as a pole and I just don't know if that's an error.
Okay.
And so we'll just look into it, but it's not going to stop or change anything.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay. Are we doing the 100s together, all together afterwards? Or do you want to do by department?
Do it any way you want to do it. You, you got it.
I, it's easier for me to do it by each individual department.
That's fine.
So it's a pleasure to the council if you want to accept those numbers for the 24 budget.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
I don't have any more on this.
Okay.
Page.
Oh, you want to, oh, you want to vote for every cell?
So I would like to.
We're going to, no, 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 but we're going to vote on every, every department, every one of these separate 100 accounts tonight?
We could do it all together.
For a minute?
Just, just, just go ahead and keep reading what we'll do and we'll do it.
You know, let's save the 100s for later overall. But there's a few departments that we do need to look at.
Okay.
In general.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I don't, okay.
And I know it's kind of confusing.
I make a motion, we just do all at once and then if there's any question, we can do individuals after that.
Collectively, after we determine the changes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's fine. Appreciate the insight because I do want to make this as easy as possible. I have nothing on the surveyor. I have nothing on parks and rec. The very next one is human resources. I have no changes there. Planning and zoning, I have no changes there. Weights and measures, I have no changes there.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, H and R, HR, H and R.
HR.
HR. What are we, are we just using existing salary for next year as a present? Okay. Thank you.
We're trying to be consistent until we can decide, until we can determine if there's any, any money's available for any raises.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We're just trying to make it, keeping it.
I meant that we, we made a motion that we might increase that. Okay, thank you.
Currently, no. If we need to do something in a salary ordinance and then we'll make sure we fund it.
Okay.
Okay.
We are budgeted for a chief deputy in that department as well, and we don't have one, correct?
That's what I thought. We had differences. They were asking for a chief deputy.
She hasn't filled her assistant position.
She's been told to.
She is the assistant.
She's, she's the assistant who stepped up. She was told to hire somebody to help and assist on a temporary basis.
Well, I'm saying that money is still there, so there is money available.
Yeah. No, we have not been paying that salary, but we did pay, the part-time person is now full-time.
Okay.
So the, the part, so they do not have a part-time person at this point.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you. Sorry.
No, we're good. I'd rather get clarity. Okay, we get to MS4 and this was updated since we met in August, I mean July. And the, the amount is, total amount is 80,950 there. There was a reduction to the program supervisors, or however that was going to be laid out. It was reduced to 55,000 and that was a part of, that was the reduction from what it was first proposed. So I have a total of 80,950 on that one. So again, it's, it's a 100 account.
Have we already approved the twos and threes on this one? Since we just got.
Hold on.
I don't believe so. It's on top of the second page.
Okay, it says consider approval of the 100 accounts. This budget should have been updated, have three employees' salaries broken down, copy of budget not available.
I don't believe we voted on this.
Well, then I'm going to ask for us to be sure. Let's, let's be sure and let's ask and let's, what would the council like to do to approve the MS4 161?
Wait, wait, correction.
Yeah.
We did, I'm just looking to see if the twos and threes changed at all from this budget. So if they're same, we already approved it then.
Okay.
The twos and threes. Yep.
We're moving forward. Thank you. The Treasurers, there has been some, some updates. this was just very recently updated. In the 100 accounts, the first two are the same. First deputy, there's a step increase at 48,384 now. The, there's two second deputies and they are at 90,328. I'm sorry, 91,204, it had the steps increases.
Together.
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 And then, and then the clerks also had needed step increases, but one clerk got moved to a second deputy. So that's why that account went down, the other one went up about the same amount. The new number there is 81595. I was going to potentially suggest a reduction in part-time and overtime, but since we still do not have the cash reconciled, let's give them the best opportunity to complete. So those 100 counts will stay the same at 15,000 and 12,000. So those were the, those were the changes on the 100s. We approved the 200, 300s. The Recorder's Office, the big change here was we had requested that one of the deputies be moved to the perpetuation fund and that has been taken care of. We go to the Coroner's Office. There was a request to increase pay, but the salary ordinance is 25359, not 29162. So that number needs to be reduced to 25359 on 10113.
The current rate is 25359.
359, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Excuse me, it's our meeting. If you can give me a moment and I'll be happy to let you speak, but thank you for putting your hand up and mentioning. Okay, just give me a moment, please. Okay, now, thank you very much for being here with us at this time.
Thank you. I apologize for not being in person, but I've got a call I didn't want to pass on to anyone else. I have requested an increase in salary for my first deputy. I looked back through all of the paperwork back to 2017 and there's not been an increase in salary for, for that position. Up until last year, they gave her a $2,000 raise. I also checked from January to September of this year. She's worked a total of 1,808 hours, which is, comes out to like 201 hours a month, which equals with her rate of pay about $10 an hour. So I would respectfully ask that the increase be allowed at the 29162.
And I'm going to inform you that we have asked to go and go with the salary ordinance because we don't know if we can give any raises at all to anybody in any section. And once we know that, then we can reconsider it, but until that, we have to go back to be consistent with everybody else. Unless the council would like to change that right now. Anybody? They have no interest on the council in changing that now. I do appreciate and do appreciate the amount of effort that that person is putting in. Okay, we're going to move on to Circuit Court. The JDI Coordinator, I, I don't know why there was an increase in, I barely have a note on it. I just had it crossed out and moved it to 49132, the same as 2023. So I don't know of any reason why that should have increased. So not knowing anything more, we can always correct it, but we'd like to move it back to the 49132 to be consistent with everything else that we've talked about. The Juvenile Services 176 account, no changes. Juvenile probation.
Just for clarification, you're just talking about holding everything in 2023?
At 2023's rates plus step increases.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep. Thank you. Juvenile probation 154, no changes to my knowledge. Superior Court Number 1, no changes to my knowledge. Community Corrections, 179. I have to double-check today's packet. I do not see any changes to the 179.
We have to approve the entire budget.
No.
No?
Marika, is that you who said no?
No, it's Rhonda, sorry. The 179 is no changes.
What did you say?
Just the 100 accounts on it.
Oh, right, the 91.
Okay, that's what we said.
917.
I have the 90, 9107 and the 4909, 590. Whatever. So let's move forward.
President, while we're on that subject, I have a sheet here that says 15% raise, community correction, 2024 notes?
The 15% increase was paid, was paid out of Public Safety Lit.
What does that have to do with 24?
Nothing, other than the fact that the 24, that same increase is included in the Public Safety Lit. When we put together a budget for Public Safety Lit. Yes. We've been approving that on a monthly basis.
Wouldn't that be true of everybody in the column? Every department?
No, only those that got the, only those that, that, that could be eligible for Public Safety Lit, yes.
Can I answer that question too? For Earl, can I answer that question for Earl?
Please answer the question for Earl.
Only Community Corrections is taking the 15% out of Lit Public Safety. The other ones, we went through and took the amount. So let's say that 15% of the raises equal $200,000. We moved the employees to Lit Public Safety, so that's why you won't see 15% on the others. Only on Community Corrections, otherwise it's full employees up to that amount.
Could you explain why, why are we doing, sorry, Earl, is there a reason that we're doing it differently for Community Corrections?
Yes, they were done that way, the other way, but what they had said was to ease up, for their ease of their grants, they didn't want those two other accounts touched. So then we moved everything from 176, is it? 179? I forget the number, 179. And forgive me, I keep losing the connection for some reason, so bear with me. But, so then, when it, when they came back with the actual budget and had to change it, they submitted to me for ease just to do the 15%, which is harder on our payroll. But it was towards the last minute, so we went ahead and did the 15% that way.
Thank you. According to the 9107 that we received in the packet today, the total amount is 654,849, same amount that was there before. Moving to the 584, I didn't, I don't have any new changes to that. I moved to the 40.
Not to interrupt you, sir.
Sure.
But it says we need to approve the entire budget due to the updates from the DOC. And this is the grant fund. Is that something we need to, aside from the 100 accounts?
If we have not, if we have not approved it before, then we rightly have to approve it now.
We need to adopt that?
Yes.
And 4909?
These were changed on 918.
Okay, council, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the 9107, 584 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Dated 9/1/23.
9/29.
9/21. Well, it's the same you said.
Yeah.
Didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're the same.
Second, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, if that's approved.
Then I'll make a motion for 49, are we going to go through that? You're going to go?
Well, I don't know if we have to do 584 also. Give me a second to the notes.
Do 4909.
Well, we also have to do five, we did the 584, 9107, 584, okay. Moving now to the 4909, 590.
Did you have any notes on that one?
I do not have any notes and it's the same total, 1.3 million.
The same as 90.
Make a motion to approve 4909, 590 as presented.
Second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Clerk's office, I have no change. Election Board, I have no change. Letter of registration, I have no change. Sorbonne Water, I have no change. Auditor's office, no change. Going to just leave the part-time alone.
Sandra, can you close the door?
Counsel, 144. I think we've approved all of this in the past. There was some, there was some mess-up on our salaries. We got those corrected, but I do not see a corrected form here.
We got the attorney's salary right.
The attorney's salary needed to be increased to 28617, I believe, for an extra 6,000. That's what I have in my notes. If that is not the case, we'll need to fix it. Prosecutor, I had no changes. 4D, I had no changes. County Highway is not out of the general fund. I have no changes. Michigan Township Assessor, no changes. County Assessor. Let me just see the notes here. It gets down to notes at the 2015 Reassessment Fund. Next page, under Assessor, under the 109, 2015, Assessor Assessment 815. Reconsider Account 30135. Professional fees as $25,000 was added for flyover program. I don't understand that comment. It says 250,000. Could you please explain?
So that, I think it's 25,000 now. They do flyover every so many years.
Is it 275,000 or is it 25,000?
Added to our existing, what we requested at the first budget, to add 25,000.
Step up here, Mike. I'm sorry.
Thank you for being here.
Mike Schultz, Port County Assessor. The 25,000, we, we thought it would be better to add it, just put it in the budget now instead of come back for an additional, that it's a, we're putting in a change finder, so when they fly it every two years, they will, if something got taken down or something got put up, it will put a, a, like a red line or something around it. So we will see if we've missed something, if someone didn't get a permit from Mike's office, it will appear and it's called Change Finder. They also use it during natural disasters, tornadoes, when they can do a flyover and our system, they can come to our system and say, oh, this is what, all these homes are gone, these barns are gone. And it's, it's the same company. We're going before the commissioners on Wednesday to ask for an addendum onto the.
Contract.
The contract and it won't start till next year and it's actually 50, but they do it 2525.
Need a motion on that?
We need a motion to, we had already approved it at 250 on that one line item plus everything else in the 200, 300. So in order to do that, we would need.
Motion to approve, increase professional services by $25,000 on the 20015 Reassessment Fund.
Second. We have a first and a second that will bring the total to $275,000. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, motion carries. I have no changes on E911, which is the next one.
I did have a question on the E911, 1222, 734 page. I was noticing the unemployment compensation, we have programmed in here 75,000, but 2023 expenditures was zero. Is there a reason that we're doing this out of their budget? Isn't that paid for by the commissioners?
I believe they pay their portion of it. You guys want to?
One second. Just, which one of them was?
Rhonda just showed me that one that, we haven't used that for the last two years. It's been coming out of the commissioner's budget, so this year she's asking that we use it for our overtime. So when we come back, I'm going to have to ask you to transfer, but it, it should be able to come out now. We don't.
For 2024, we gotta move it.
Out of our surcharge account. Yes.
This is surcharge money.
This is, yeah.
Yeah.
Not general money.
General fund.
You feel comfortable with us removing it?
Yeah, we haven't, I went back and, and checked what Rhonda has and we haven't used it for the last two years. So at some point, they started taking it out of the commissioner's side.
Okay.
Okay, it's a 100 account that we haven't approved yet, so that's going to go to zero. That is 101158. The unemployment compensation under the E911, 1222, 734. So we'll approve that at the end with all the others. Any other question? Yes, sir. Ready to move on? Okay. Under EMS, I had no change. I did have a question though for overtime for EMS, if you could just give me a, spare me a second. We tried to move it up to 205 and I was wondering if we could just pull it back to the 105 and then we'll go through the regular process of.
Yeah, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. We've been doing that for the last over a year, so I just thought it'd be easier to.
I agree with you, but we are at such a point on this that we need to pull it back to 105.
That's fine.
And if everybody else agrees, then that's what we will do. All right. I have in their section a piece of the proposed Public Safety Lit, I'm going to, for EMS. I'm going to make a note that there's an account 20016 for $618,615 for a Tahoe and two ambulances. This normally, we're talking Public Safety Lit money, not general fund. I point to this now so that at the very end, when we get to the very last page, you'll see why. So I'm just, keep in mind that there is for vehicle for a couple of ambulances and a Tahoe in here. Okay. Moving on. The Health Department, there's two things to consider. They have, they're going to get money from the state and they have been working on putting together a matching amount for expenses. I do not know what, we do not have that finished, so at this point in time. It is in here. I, I don't have it.
Rhonda, do we have the Health Department's?
Local Health Service Fund, 1161.
We are expecting to get $1,356,548. We will know in the middle of this month that it will be confirmed, but that's the month, the amount that we received in a letter. Please come on up in case we have any other questions on it.
I do have verbal approval.
Yeah.
On this.
So this is to match.
They've not written anything until.
So this is to match. So if we need to make an adjustment later on in the year, we can make any adjustment if the amount turns out to be different. So we do need to approve this. I know we're seeing it for the first time. Please take a moment.
We do at this meeting, Mr. President?
Okay. If we can, if you feel uncomfortable doing it at this meeting, then we'll, you know.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing no ayes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is now funded. In our book Pioneer Cemetery, no changes in our book, EMA, no changes in our book, IT. Same thing as I did in the Facilities Manager, the 10111 Department head bringing it down to 77033. Not having the 5,000 from the FMEC is not guaranteed. I, I, when we took a look at what was in for the system technicians, the amount in the, is 186102 is what's in the salary ordinance, not 189822.
It says for 23, 1869.
I know, but when we looked in the.
But when that's number's wrong?
Yeah, I'm saying that when we looked in the salary ordinance, it was 186102.
There's no anticipated step increases or anything that would explain that?
No, the people have been here two and three years, one at three years and, and two at two. And I don't have any other explanation.
Actually, doesn't exist until it has like 25 years. There's one that's at 99, but then everybody else is.
Okay. Yeah, but that's some, that's not one of these.
Okay.
That's a deputy.
Wait, that's a deputy's position, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the deputy happens to get a lot of the time, yeah. Okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to just move, I don't care if we go with 186988 or 186102, I don't care. But it's not 189. What number would you like to recommend?
So again, you're holding it to 2023.
I was trying to hold it to what's in the salary ones. And then if we want to hold, so then let's hold, let's keep it at 186988.
The 2023.
Yep.
Thank you very much, until we figure out beyond that. Thank you. Superior Court 3, no change. Public Defender. I'm a little unclear in my notes, so maybe somebody else has something different. I have that we moved the 30135 account to 617,806.
Mr. President?
Public Defender?
Yeah, Public Defender 180, 180. Sorry.
You said 30.
I just said Public Defender. I didn't even say more, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I went back to the IT, you, you get it, after three years, you get a step. So there are people that are eligible.
But a step can't be.
No.
$3,000.
I didn't say that. I said, you get a step at three years.
Okay, well then, we'll find out what that number should be.
Okay.
But even if it's a thousand off, we can fix it.
I'm just mentioning that there is a step.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I, I just don't know what the step is.
Nor do I.
I mean, we do have some schedule in here, but I can't, I'm not going to drive those. Okay, does anybody else have any notes on the Public Defender themselves?
What's your question?
My question is the 30135 account, did we approve it at 1.4 million or do we approve it at 617,806? Because I have it, I have it written down. I have all sorts of numbers added here.
It's been a little while, but weren't they requesting a, an increase for the Public Defenders?
They were.
They were, but we also originally had it in here for medical insurance and that doesn't have it. That's not happening the way it was originally thought.
Is it all coming out of their account?
You have to be a little more clear, Mr. Novak. Is it all coming out of their account? Didn't quite know.
Defender 10180 coming out of his Public Defender account.
So as we left it last year, each person under contract got that $800 stipend a, a month in order, as part of their contract in order to offset.
A a month in order, as part of their contract, in order to offset, and, oh, right, so I'm assuming that's what he came back with. You know what I mean, whatever that number was, when you guys funded this, or for your budget this year.
This year, they're adding, he's asking.
He's asking for an additional increase for the public defenders.
So, I I'm I'm gonna try and help and make this a little clearer, cause I think my notes are confusing.
My, my question is, is this coming out of our funds or out of his funds?
Well, that depends upon, right, so he gets a fifty percent.
He, we get re- we get reimbursed for fifty percent, right. For the, what we're looking at here is fifty percent, right, that's why I just wanna double check.
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't.
No, no, so I, I I'm gonna apologize, but this is what I have in my notes. I do have that we get reimbursed for half, so.
Up to fifty percent.
Up to fifty percent, and we get reimbursed approximately forty-nine, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, plus another thirty-five thousand. And then there's some small amount for twenty-two oh six state mandate, not it. So, I may have just put in a note that we get reimbursed for six seventeen eight oh six, and I'm going to apologize if I'm confusing anybody on this. As I read through the notes from July, it's hard to remember all of that, so this was approved, so let's move on. I didn't have anything on the sheriff, I didn't have anything under the jail. We'll get to the safety lit after. Since we've met and it has not been shared here with everybody mutually, just amongst a few people, um, we have been asked to increase um the tool allowance. Um, which I believe is under the two oh oh one five account, which we had already approved. If there's any interest in doing that. We would need a motion as to the amount, and um then we'd all have to agree to it. I believe right now the tool allowance is at three hundred. Missouri. Please.
Um, I know I've met with um sheriff Ron Hig and uh Major Pat Cicero here recently. And I know the mechanics were pretty much promised a bit of a raise last year in addition to the ten percent. Uh, or at least it was hoped to be, and was kind of a promise, I guess, but um. Of course, things got put on a back burner for a while, and with meeting with them, why, uh, it was mentioned that uh. I think they were kind of looking at a probably a, a, another five percent, which would have probably been around four or five thousand dollars, but uh. Uh, with talking with them, why, I would like to see, and they would like to see twenty-five hundred dollars per mechanic for a tool stipend. And that would be total, there's four mechanics, ten thousand dollars, uh, I think we probably all know, and it's been discussed before about how. Uh, those mechanics out there do ambulances, and of course, the patrol cars and that, but uh, they need specialty tools and special equipment, which they uh. Purchase every year, and it's much more than three hundred dollars a year, uh, and this would subsidize uh. That and um give them some, and we, you know, we're very fortunate to have the four people that we got, they're very, very dedicated, and they've been there. Forty and forty-five years, two of them, and uh sure wouldn't, wouldn't wanna see them uh leaving. Not that they're threatening that or anything, but they, they are definitely a big benefit to that department in this county.
What's the current allowance now, or what do they get for tools now, any?
Three hundred dollars, I believe.
Is anybody from the sheriff's office? Sorry.
Correct, they get three hundred dollars.
So wait for quite some, we, we have uniforms here, and I thought it was included in uniforms.
No, the tool stipend was different than uniforms. We just started the tool stipend. For the, for mechanics at the sheriff's office, probably about three or four years ago, once we realized there were some mechanics at the county highway that was receiving.
So it's, what line item is it in?
Good question.
We're, we're at a loss at what line item it could be.
Yeah, it was just added a few years ago into the, into it. I don't know exactly where that's coming out of.
So we have, this is what we have, overtime, mechanics, uniforms, gas, fuel, and oil, maintenance and repairs.
It's probably gonna come out of uniforms then. But that's where it's coming from.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I, I understand, uh, Mr. Mullenour's comment, I would rather see. A list of something they need, will purch- you know, when we purchase it, instead of getting ongoing every year, that thing, that'd be a large amount every year. If they need tools, I I think we should take care of the tools, I have no problem with that, but to go from three, three hundred to twenty-five hundred. Whatever, we don't want, I wanna buy just tools to buy tools. But I, I also, I also, so, may I? When you're, when he's done, when he's done. Go ahead, Mr. Go ahead. No, I I guess my concern would be is, a lot of these mechanics show up and they already have all their tools, so this is a way kind, kind of um. Paying them back for all the tools that they bring with. I, this is my personal opinion, if we say, hey, you got a thousand dollars a year to buy tools. My God, they're gonna buy a thousand dollars worth of tools every year, just whether they need them or, I'm just saying, and I'm not, this isn't directed at them, this is just historically, so. And I'm not saying twenty-five hundred is the number, I'm just saying. No, I didn't. I'd rather.
Well, I know it was kicked around to try and get them more, like I mentioned a little bit ago, but also for a specialty pay. But of course, that, that doesn't, isn't covered with mechanics under the lit either, and um. I guess that's something that could be considered, but uh, it was thought that this would probably be a bit of a remedy to, to give them some incentive to uh. Increase their pay, uh, like I said.
So the, so this actually is not a tool fund, this would be just cash, and they do whatever they wanna do with it then.
True.
This is a stipend, not a reimbursement for.
Right.
Expense. Right, stipend, yes.
But good mechanics got twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of tools.
Oh, at least, that's Mr. Mullenour's.
More than that.
Couple of our mechanics who've been here for forty-plus years, uh, they've got forty-plus years of tools that they came into, and that they've uh collected over the years.
The tool boxes, the tool boxes alone that they have out there, probably four and five thousand dollars, just to, you know.
It's something we gotta consider right now. Mr. Mullenour, did you make any form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
At the twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Five hundred.
Is there further discussion? Might, I I'm, I'm gonna pipe in, I think that's a little high. To set a rate like that for every year, and I would rather see us go up to a thousand dollars, from three hundred to a thousand dollars at tops. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, waiting for you to finish. The problem is, it, I, I know, it's not your fault, but this is common thing throughout departments. They came and asked for it because the highway was gonna get it. So now, they're gonna get it, now they're gonna come back and say, well, they got it, I want it too. That's the problem, that, this is not a simple solution to fix a problem. We, cause that's how they got their raise a couple of years ago. The highway got it, so we, we deserve it too. So now, we do this, what do you think is gonna happen in the next pro- uh, motion? But, I'd, I'd rather see something similar to a thousand, but.
I would, I would. Wait, one second.
Okay, go ahead.
I have some similar reservations, and and I'm not saying that the uh, the stipend isn't unwarranted for tho- that department, but. When we're considering not giving raises to every department in the county, it feels like we. That may make some people uncomfortable, that one department got raises in some form, even if it is a stipend, and others didn't. Uh, that's my reservation to it.
I guess, m- my only thing I would request of the people that made the motion is possibly started off at a thousand, not that, I, I honestly believe. They're worth every penny of it, um, and this isn't taking away from that. My only thing is, is I'd like to see it maybe start off at a thousand dollars. Just so that we, it's something we can increase as time goes on, instead of starting it on at the very top, um, given the situation that we're in right now.
If that were in the form of an amendment to the motion, I would.
That, I'm offering it as an amendment, if, if, if they're willing to take that.
Mr. Mullenour, your choice.
I have reservations on lowering it to a thousand dollars, um, doesn't sound like um, the twenty-five hundred's going to pass, but I really think it should with uh. And and I know what uh Councilman Yagelski's uh mentioning about the, the mechanics at the uh county highway, and nothing against them, and I know they have. Uh, tools also, but not to the extent that the uh four mechanics at the sheriff's department garage with the ambulance service that uh. That have, that their tools are, uh, from experience, I know the specialty that they, tools that they have to have, um.
Would you feel comfortable with us walking a little bit slower here, doing a smaller amount, and then we pick a date in early next year to come back to this and revisit to look at the full amount? After we have a, a better idea about how our budget process goes?
I could, I could live with that.
Won't let us forget, I'm confident.
Make the amendment for a thousand dollar or stipend at this.
You don't have to make the amendment, you change your, change your motion.
And then, Mr. Cunningham, were you the one that seconded at the twenty-five hundred? Would you be in agreement to make, lower it to one thousand?
I'll second this since I pitched it.
Okay, so we have a first and second on one thousand is, and that, that's adding twenty-eight hundred dollars to this account, which makes us account six thousand, three hundred dollars.
With a reconsideration in the.
With a reconsideration. In the, in next, in twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. No changes to courthouse security, either one. Board of Commissioners.
So new one in here?
I know that we receive, I received an email, I'm looking to see if there's a copy in here.
I don't believe.
Here is not an updated copy.
So we'll have to hold that over till next.
We're running out of time to hold things over.
Motion to approve it to twenty-three levels.
We have a motion and a second to approve it to twenty-three levels. Could, um, just, I just wanna ask, we do have a hard copy there, I could, rather me trying to bring it up on my phone, and I just wanna see what the totals are in comparison.
I think there is, there's a, uh, there's an increase, mandated increase in the uh mental health. With exception for mandates. Postage was also, they asked for um, a little bit more because it's a presidential year. They asked for that to be increased to uh. You can read it, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention, um.
I did also talk to uh Michigan Insurance today, who told me the anticipated amounts of. Insurance for self-funded versus non-self-funded, uh, the total amount together, I believe, was about two point. Four million, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Two point.
Could be an eight percent increase.
So I know it's grossly under budgeted right now for those things.
So the. The, Mr. President, may I?
Please, and then I'm gonna go.
The information I received from Diane today was the, the liability claims, uh, it was two million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventeen, fifty-four cents. Claims paid out in twenty twenty-two, as of December, uh, she would say, I would say, we need at least that, so.
Yeah, so that's the total, and uh, they need to be separated into self-insured and non-self-insured. So the self-insured, let me see how I, I texted these, so I'd remember them one second. The. Self-insured. The non-self-insured is two million, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Then the self-insured that you would need is five hundred, seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, that.
And those would be in two separate accounts.
That doesn't equal the amount that.
Okay, I mean, use what amount you want, this is from Michigan Insurance, but feel free to do whatever.
Mr. Mr. Novak?
Do you have lower or higher?
It's lower. The amount was two million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five seventeen, is what she said they've spent in twenty.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Is that claims paid on the self-insured?
Liability claims. That's I, that's all she said.
So is that claims paid on our SIRs, which were, was actually our money?
You want me to read it to you again?
But that, that doesn't.
All the information I got.
Then you don't know what to put in these accounts without that understanding.
I agree.
Because if she mentioned two thousand and twenty-two, to me, that sounds like amounts that were paid. SIR.
I know, it's, it's very limited amount of information, so, yeah.
Can we get the commissioners on the phone or something, so we can ask them some questions about their budget? My, my concern is that if some of these numbers are reflected too low, we're gonna have an even bigger budget deficit later, it's, it's masking a problem that we're gonna see down the road. My impression is that they did not add the uh ten percent increase to OASI and PERF into this, and so those numbers are too low. In fact, they're too low for this year even.
I can read to you the email from Michigan Insurance, if you would like.
Rhonda, if you would hold for a moment.
Second.
We have Ms. Yagelski, who has somebody on the phone.
Uh, he said stick with the two million and five eighty, basically, five seventy, whatever it was. Stick with the amounts he goes, because there's gonna be some increases, and he thinks it's gonna be up to eight percent. So, as of right now, he said stick with the amount you have right now, there's no way to determine it yet, because the rates have been set yet.
He's saying stay with the lower number, or?
With the two million and five eighty, or five seventy.
So, what I see on the third page, or what's listed as page four, or the third page that came out, or what was in. Hold on, I'm tr- let me try and look at it, and try and compare it to what was in this.
What numbers you come up with? Two million plus.
Two million, two hundred and twenty-nine.
Right.
Five seventeen. That Rhonda gave that, Rhonda, what was that second number you gave? Five hundred and some thou-
Five seven zero two five zero, and two million, oh eight eight.
Yeah, John Jones, John Jones said that's the projected amount for next year for self-insured claims, or for self-insured premiums, five hundred, seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so that's different, that's self-insured premiums.
And then the first number was two million?
Eighty-eight.
Well, it's for all of, self-insured is the money that's all paid to travelers, so it's not claims, it's the premiums. And then the second one are the premiums for non-self-insured lines, so that would be Bitco, I don't know all of their companies. But two million, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. So it's actually higher than the two point two.
Right.
Probably because the prices have gone up since twenty twenty-two, I guess.
Thank you.
So according to this.
You're welcome.
Of the original board of commissioners that we had in our binder. We're talking about counts three zero zero six seven and three zero zero six eight, is what I'm gathering those.
I think it's. What is three zero zero six five? Cause I believe it's.
Professional consulting.
Consulting services.
Yeah, it could be, they both say liability, uh.
The first one says liability slash accident insurance premium, the other says liability slash accident claim pool.
And they both had the exact same amount in them.
They both had five hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred and forty-nine, nine ninety-nine in previous.
Yeah.
And then.
And they've always moved both of those accounts to their fund four seven oh one. Um, so I don't think that they have a distinction between those two accounts at all, because they mingle them together and move them to four seven oh one. But now we know that without an ordinance, four seven oh one can't be used, but it. With an ordinance would only be including the self-insured, so that's why you want to know which account is for self-insured and which one is not. Of those three zero zero numbers.
So, Ms. Griggs, you know my feelings about making sure we don't under uh represent these costs that we're gonna have. What would you recommend us approving for those two line items, the three hundred sixty-seven and three hundred sixty-eight?
I would say, uh, we knew at the begin- well, when I started, we knew, I think Commissioner Gama Rosa had even told me. That we were about two point five million under budgeted, so unless you plan, and it's showing that, so she was correct. So unless you plan on additionally appropriating it somewhere else in the future, it needs to be in this budget, if it can somehow.
Completely agree. What's the number it should be?
Um, according to John Jones, one should be the two hundred and some. Two mil, I'm sorry.
Two million.
Two million, eighty-eight thousand, four one four. And then the one for self-funded, which is currently travelers, would be five hundred, seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That doesn't.
He did mention that they're looking at saving money by taking everything back to self-insured. So even if it's separated right now, because they're both in three hundred accounts, they could be combined later. So as long as you know which one is self-insured and which one isn't, to me, that's the most important thing, to follow the law.
Counsel, please.
I don't, I don't think that's consistent with what I heard. I thought I heard two million dollars twice.
Two million eighty-eight.
There's no way that the, that the travelers' premium is only five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand?
Because the cars.
Did you say there's no way it's five hundred thousand?
Because the cars are not included.
Cars are on the other side, because now the cars are no longer self-insured.
Correct.
Right.
That's why.
Okay.
That's what he, I just got off the phone, that's what he told.
Are they planning to go back to self-insurance for vehicles?
Guys want to go back to self-insured, all it's gonna do is go back and forth.
Well, that's next year.
But we're talking about next year.
But later next year, not January.
It would be later in the year, so this is how it would start this out separate like this, the two million and the five hundred thousand would keep them current right now. And then if they did have to combine it, they would be able to.
And they would, they anticipate, may I, Mr. President?
Please.
That, we anticipate that that would cover the year?
He said, his email specifically says this is the projected cost for twenty twenty-four.
Cause we had.
I'm gonna say that's the anticipation, but anything could change. He didn't say definite.
They requested a million eighty-seven twice.
I can forward you this email if someone wants to open it there. I mean, you're welcome to read it. I am just reading what he sent me. I have no idea.
Rhonda, I'd gladly take it.
Okay, I'm gonna recommend the following changes to the Commissioners', um, budget. In the one zero one one seven account at comment five, the secretary, um, forty-seven, four thirty-five, because that person has step increases. In the one zero one three zero account, the extra higher part-time seasonal has VSO. Um, that is requested to be at twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two. The curators, originally, one of the curators was supposed to be full-time and was left off. The total number for the two curators, the main and the second, is eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Postage was listed at ninety-five thousand, unless anybody else on the council wants to recommend the change, we can leave it at that and then fund it as we need it. We go to the last pa- oh, the bottom where, or the part where it's three zero zero, I'll come back to the insurance in just a second. We go back, uh, three zero zero seventy-two, La Porte County Mental Health. It's a mandatory number that has to be seventy, seven hundred, seventy-seven thousand, eleven, okay? Everybody got those changes so far. We now come back to those two insurance accounts. Just need to find them again. Three zero zero six seven, the one that we believe is for the premiums, to be two million oh eight eight, four one four. Three zero zero six eight, liability accident claim pool, to be five seven zero two five zero.
And just to re- clarify, the five seven zero two five zero is the premium that would be due for travelers' insurance, so it's not a claim pool, it's a premium.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Got it. Is that all you got?
What I got on the Commissioners.
So, Mike, just.
And may I ask, in front of you, what I don't have, or what may not show on your paper, uh, one seventy-six and one forty-four, so the Commissioners and the Juvenile, those are the two departments that have been requesting a comment change, and I believe.
Hold on, hold on, we're not addressing that now, so please don't bring it up, okay? We're talking about where we stand.
One hundred accounts in the Commissioner, but you go ahead, sorry.
So, Mr. President, based on the translation that I was getting out of the claims pool versus premium, the, uh, two million eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen would actually be applied to three zero zero six eight, and then the five seventy, two hundred and fifty would be three zero zero six seven.
So it's flipping.
So it's flipping them.
Thank you for the correct. Yes.
Um, I would also encourage us to add at least another ten percent to the OASI withholding, Medicare withholding, and the, uh, retirement withholding. And we did the ten percent raises, those all need to be increased as well. Yeah, I'm like, I'm gonna try that.
Are we gonna motion for all of it at the same time?
Didn't we have a motion on the floor to start with for this?
Nope.
I don't think we did.
We didn't have any.
He just finished, so we didn't.
Okay, so motion to approve all of the items that, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum just mentioned, as well as a ten percent increase to the, uh, OASI, Medicare, and retirement. Anything that I'm missing in there? Postage.
Well, only if you wanna give more postage, or if you want them to come back.
But he said, he said everything that Mr. Rosenbaum read, so.
The minute ticker will have to park that out.
I read it as the ninety-five thousand, if they need more, they can come back to us.
Okay, I would reflect that in my motion, as well as, um, the, uh, insurance, uh, items that Mr. Krunka mentioned. Tie that all up with a pretty bow.
Medicare withhold, or?
So I have a motion.
Yeah, that was the two point zero eight, and then the five seventy.
Okay.
Um, and I would also include in that motion to strongly encourage the Commissioners to take a look at what we just did, make sure they agree with it, and if they have something that they disagree with, to pretty quickly contact us about it.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
What's pretty quickly?
Like, within hours. They should act, like, or tomorrow morning, ASAP.
I'll get ahold of the Commissioner's office in the morning, since I.
Thank you, yeah.
So I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Not in this, uh, this, uh, Mr. President, may I ask, Rhonda, um, Graves, I'm sorry. During, I'm sorry, I apologize. During the, uh, budget hearings, we had that one account that we haven't used for five years, had two million dollars in it. I was asking to take that amount and apply it, because we aren't using that account anymore. Do you remember, Ms. Rhodes, when I came up there and talked to you, what that account was? Ms. Rhodes?
Graves.
I'm Graves.
Did you say my name?
Ro, yeah. Rhonda Graves, Rhonda.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Uh, during, during the budget hearing, I walked up to you because there was some, that fund that we haven't used for the last four years, it was like two million dollars in it. Do you remember when I talked to you? Do you remember what fund that was, that the Commiss- in the Commissioners?
No.
Is there something?
No, I'm not sure.
Does anybody else remember that conversation that we looked, we talked about, Mr. Novak, or anybody else?
I don't, I don't remember it off the top of my head. I remember something vaguely about that, but I don't remember.
I left my notes at home, I'm sorry.
No, the only notes I have was something about the three one oh oh seven, the workman's comp insurance.
Okay, I just, I'll let.
And that was zero, and.
I'll let it go then, I'm sorry.
And so that was the only one that, I thought that number had to be a million twenty-two.
I didn't bring it, so.
But no one else has brought it or addressed that, so.
I'll try to remember to send these, send this copy that Mr. Rosenbaum read off with the changes out to everybody as soon as the meeting's over.
Appreciate that.
Fantastic, and, and maybe make a point of asking about the workman's comp, because it's probably not zero.
Well, it has been, it's been paid out of another account.
Workman's comp, it's my understanding that that is zero, they don't use that account.
They don't use that account anymore.
That's my understanding.
Correct.
With the meeting that we had, yeah.
Mr. Kiel, Ms. Graves just said that in that two million dollars, you had the Bitco premium in that, in that account. Okay, that's where comp, okay, so.
So it's already included.
It goes work comp.
Okay, fantastic. Um, one other question from Ms. Graves, is there any issue with the, uh, the one hundred accounts for Commissioners? Are those all accurately reflected, to your knowledge?
I don't think so. That's what I was trying to say earlier when Mike didn't want me to bring it up, so when you're ready for one hundreds, I'll be happy to state that again.
Within the?
Bring it on.
Within the Commissioners' account?
What?
Within the Commissioners' account?
That's what I said, yes.
No, it's comment five.
Are we sure?
Yes.
Do you wanna ask her about?
She said in, in a, these that are in.
The notes here says that it's a comment five, not comment six.
So the Commissioner's Secretary is being programmed in right now as a comment five, not a comment six?
Correct.
That, this is the, this is what came from the Commissioners' Secretary today.
The Form one forty-four came from the Commissioners as a comment six, I believe.
I haven't seen the one forty-four.
So that might be the amount, you wouldn't see the one forty-four, we type it into the budget, that's why I was trying to give you that information.
Well, they highlighted comment five on.
We're only paying at a comment.
They sent out to us today.
For the sake of clarity, I would include in the motion that, uh, that we're, we're being clear that right now, this is being programmed as a comment five, not a comment six, that can be readdressed later, so.
And that's what I'm saying, is the amount that was written on the original budget might be incorrect. So if, just so you're aware of that, the same with one seventy-six. Both of the ones that haven't been approved yet, they both put in the Form one forty-four for it, assuming that was already gonna be done, so that's what I was trying to tell you.
Okay, alright.
But yes, making it a level five, and then we'll look up that amount would, would work great.
Sure, we.
Thank you.
Are we done with this yet?
I think so.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries. Adult probation, I had no changes. The next thing was payroll grid, let's skip that. Cumulative capital, two one six account, this is the one that I said had a, I thought, remember I brought up the six sixteen in the public safety lit, and we still have to do public safety lit as a whole? We have here, and I do, and, and this, my note, that it was the Sheriff's Department, so it was one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, there's six hundred and forty thousand dollars, and there was a comment said that we do not receive this amount in funds. And then there's, do we want to budget in general, or in the Sheriff one oh five account, the six hundred and forty thousand for, and this is capital development, cumulative capital development. And I thought that this was also the vehicles that we put in there, and so I'm not sure if this is duplicated or not. And I need that clarity.
I believe, it's my understanding with, with talking with, um, previously on this, if you look, the twenty twenty-three adjusted is eleven thousand, eight hundred. The adjusted budget in twenty twenty-two is one thou- one hundred and forty-two thousand, five forty-two. We never get, they put in there, they're requesting six hundred and forty thousand dollars for that to be funded with that. It never comes in with that, it's my understanding, so.
So do we have one point two million, eight, eighty thousand in that, that we need to approve? Or is it six hundred and forty thousand that we need to?
Well, it's, it's the two different account, you can, we can approve it, I, I would not count on, um, having the money in there, though, because it's always been underfunded.
Is this an issue of, uh? Like the levy not fully collecting, or what's the funding source for this?
We already, we already approved this.
We did?
Written, I wrote approved, don't I?
Right, it's written approved. Let's move on to Public Safety Lit, eleven seventy. The one that's dated ten one, twenty-three. Problem with this one is I do not know if we have the incentive pay included in this at eighty-three thousand. Mr. Auditor, can you or somebody from your department inform us where that might be?
Rhonda, do you know?
Um, I found it on, there's, uh, on the second page, one zero two three four account. It is listed at seventy-eight thousand, that's underfunded, it needs to be eighty-three thousand. So I'd like to make that five thousand dollar change.
Motion.
Six eight nine six, four seventy-four is the total. I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Pardon me. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion. Any nays? Motion carries. There is a note here about the Regional Planner, NERC C. Consider approval of this budget, I thought we had, so.
Upon reviewing the minutes, uh, I don't, I think we had a discussion about it, but I don't think it resulted in a motion being made to approve it, so.
It was for ninety-five thousand, but let's get it in our front of us.
I just saw it.
Any help with anybody finding it first?
It's not in that packet, it was in the supplemental one.
It's not in there, it was handed out nine eighteen, or there was also a copy in the packet, Tim gave me today. I believe.
I have Regional Planner, two eighteen account, NERC C, um, it has been ninety-five thousand for the past couple of years.
I would, I would make a motion to keep it at ninety-five thousand.
We have a motion.
Okay.
And a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Lit Economic Development, consider approval of the entire budget, this update does not include the amount needed for economic development. It was in tonight's packet. It's got three lo- four lines on it. Salary for Highway Superintendent, it's four, four thousand, nine ninety-nine, it's separate from the MVH funds and all those other funds. Six hundred and eighty-two thousand for.
Bond payment.
Bond, bond, for the tax lien exempt bond payment, two hundred and twenty thousand to pay for economic development, and five million dollars for the highway, right, that's that budget, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. What we have left is the one hundred accounts, as we have read today, tonight, with all those corrections.
Did we finish Lit Public Safety?
Public Safety Lit.
Oh, I thought we did. I thought we added the five thousand, five thousand dollars to it, and then we did Public Safety Lit it.
You just approved it?
We just approved it.
There's an entire budget of Lit Public Safety to look at.
Before?
It was on page two, account one oh two three four, which has seventy-eight thousand, I asked to make it to eighty-three thousand, then I said the total was six million, eight hundred ninety-six, four seven four, and we approved it. Okay, anything else?
Um, a question for Ms. Graves, none of the numbers that were in Lit Public Safety were, were duplicated anywhere else in the budget, correct?
Not correct, they are duplicated, so EMS, uh, especially EMS, and they may be the only one, but the ones with question marks on Lit Public Safety could be duplicates, because they're things that either were in their budget originally, but then they said maybe it could be moved to Lit Public Safety, so you're definitely gonna wanna look at the question marked ones.
How would you feel about us giving you, uh, our blessing to clear that up and figure out where they need to be put, as you put together the budget?
Me?
Yeah, you.
I don't mind to do it, I mean, if I know that everything's approved, I'll know how to fix it, yeah, that doesn't bother me in the least.
And then give us a report on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll, what I would do is read, I'll redo the, all of the budget pages for everyone in effect, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm gonna put that in the form of a motion, and, uh, I'd move to, uh, give the Auditor's Office to make, uh, permission to make technical corrections, to remove any duplicates, as long as they report back to us what changes they made as they submit the budget, and then we have still the ultimate authority over it when we go to actually approve the budget during budget hearings.
You're presuming these question mark items specific to Public Safety Lit stay in Public Safety Lit and get taken out from the, of the other place they're at?
That would be my assumption, yes, and I'm wording this broadly enough, if you see other minor technical corrections that need to be made, that we would be blessing that as well, just report it back to us, and then we can hash it out later if we need to.
Just for the sake of clarity, there's been several of these that we've actually covered and moved to Public Safety Lit out of the one thousand accounts during the budget, the first sessions, the budget hearings.
They might have missed.
Yes, there's.
Thanks, Doctor, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those nay? Motion carries.
Is it?
May I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Is it safe to say then, what you're saying is, everything that's listed on Lit Public Safety in your hands is approved, and then that's what I need to correct in the other budgets?
That is my intention, yes.
Mr. President, is this, is this, is this the reason why you brought up that six hundred and eighteen thousand, six fifteen earlier? That wasn't EMS's budget also? So please, let's.
But we need to.
So it's a duplicate.
We need to.
Yes.
Get a.
You're on microphone, yes?
Sorry, yes, sir.
Thank you.
That was the intent is.
See the duplicates and, and get a report on what duplicates were found and how it all panned out.
Yeah, my impression is there's no way that we have, it's absolutely perfect, so let's give them a little bit of wiggle room to, to tweak it right as they go to submit it.
Can, can we?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can we also request? I don't know what you're gonna look at. Rhonda, over there. I don't know what you're gonna look at. Rhonda over there, you over here. Um, i- in the past, we would get kind of a running tally on where we're at from the twenty twenty-three budget to the, what we're, what we've approved to date. From every account and everything where it is, we'd get a dollar amount as to, a running tally as to where we're at. So when the time comes to do the one hundred accounts, we can actually look and see, have a better idea of the amount of money that we have left to play with for raises, so.
I presume, Rhonda, that you could speak to that, but I presume it's once, once all these numbers are changed, then the answer is yes, right?
Yes, I, I believe so. I'll figure out how to do it, but yeah.
From everything from the two and three hundred accounts that we approved, the increases, any step increases, and then, um, yeah. For the, for the general fund. Right, okay, thank you.
So it was my intention to do the one hundred accounts next, to approve the one hundred accounts.
Mm-hmm.
Will this prohibit us from doing the one hundred accounts?
I don't see how we're gonna do it when we don't know how much money we got.
Well, we're basically approving them at twenty twenty-three levels.
Well, then you can do that, and then we can always amend it.
Yeah, we can amend it later.
Right. I think that's what you were kinda doing as we went through.
Absolutely. Try to work that, that's why I wanted to get that done.
Right.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you for putting up with that. Okay, um, gentlemen on, on, on the council, um, that comment was meant for some students that were here. Um, so, uh, members of the council, we'd like to approve the one hundred counts at the twenty twenty-three level with, um, the step increases and, uh, those other minor adjustments as we went through them. That included safety lit as well, that included wherever.
President, motion approved.
I have a motion.
Second, with the caveat, this gives us the time then to look at, get a true number where we're at. So it's not to say this is it.
No, we, we definitely need a true number.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. Okay. So any other comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Is that it? In recess?
Uh, he's, President, motion to, uh, recess the budget hearings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to recess. Hold on, uh, there'll be a transfer comment.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any comment?
Uh, Ms. Graves, is there anything that you heard out of all of this tonight that you want us to make any corrections or changes? Anything we'll ask before we, we close this?
I don't think so. Um, again, I think the way that Mr. Rosenbaum just worded the one hundreds will help correct any, uh, thing that I had mentioned before. So I think sort of being reminded of anything, that I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Um, our intent is to get this advertised as quickly as possible. Do you feel confident that you would be able to get this advertised as soon as tomorrow?
I should be able to, if not, like, if tomorrow includes the evening hours, but yes, that's what I'll work on tonight and tomorrow.
That includes eliminate?
Mr. Keel.
Sorry?
Make it first thing Wednesday.
Yeah, cause she's still gotta go through the lit and make some new duplications.
I know it's an aggressive timeline. Um, the reason I propose it is because if it was done on, by the third, tomorrow, ten days later would be the thirteenth of October. Um, we'd have to have a special meeting. Ten more days after that would be the twenty-third, which we already have a regular meeting scheduled for. So this would prevent us from needing another additional meeting in October. That's the only reason.
The twenty-third meeting to the thirtieth.
Or right before the meeting.
So.
We move it to the, from the thirteen to the fourteen.
We can, but then it's ten days in between each step.
You need exactly ten days.
So that's, that's the only reason I'm.
No pressure, Rhonda.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I hear ya. Um, I have to assume that I can get it done. If I can't, I would let you know, and then you could choose those second, uh, Plan B dates, but.
Okay.
I'm definitely able to work on it tonight and tomorrow without a problem.
That seems fair. And then while we're on the topic of budgets, uh, do we wanna have Baker Tilly give a little bit of a report about the packet of information we got here?
No, we can't do this, we need this.
We're, we're already forty-six minutes into our, the meeting. So we have a call for recess of this meeting. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing no nays, motion carries. We're in recess for five minutes.